I'd like to call the work session today forward to order if we could please. And the first item on the agenda is modification of the handicap flag policy. Darrell, why don't you?
I just want to remind everybody that Chris is over there. Maybe Chris, he can wave at everybody. He's recording this meeting and it will be livestreamed. He has a new desk to make it more efficient. You have a couple of left go. Darrell, you're up.
Want me to talk into the mic?
Yes, please.
I've got to turn it off first. All right. Testing.
Just take it off.
That'll work. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Right, good morning, all. The current handicap flag policy is what we're looking at, making an adjustment, a test policy for 2019. Currently as it stands, the handicap flag policy is limited to customers with state driver's licenses that have handicap disabilities. It was utilized by about 15 people for the last six months. We're looking at doing something different in 2019. It was brought to us by a member for our aged population that are struggling to get out of the golf courses. What the new policy includes, it is a test. It's just going to allow customers over the age of 80, if they feel they need the ability to get closer to the greens or the tee boxes, to apply for a flag license. What that is, is they come in, they show their driver's license, they get a little card, they come in the day they choose to use it, whether it be at Highlands or golf course, they turn that in with their driver's license, they are then allowed to use a handicap flag to get around the golf courses. It is over the age of 80. That is something we're going to try this year. We proposed this to the JAC, it was voted on, yes, we're bringing it to you to try it. This system will, this policy will only be in place from April 1st to October 31st. That is something in the growing season, so it's summer, it's not going to hurt our golf courses, Mr. Keith Ives is behind it, and so is the rest of my staff. Any questions on that?
You did say 15 people have used it.
Currently 15 have used it in 2018. We don't feel it's going to be overwhelmed. We're just trying to help our age population.
Okay, so those 15 people can use their flag year-round?
Correct.
And so the new people will be only October, April through October?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just a little, little stuff, and on this policy, it's going to follow all the stipulations that were determined last year. 30 feet from the green, 30 feet from the tee box, the court's on path, you're not allowed to use the flags. If this is abused by our membership, we will have to pull it back, because we've got to look after our product that we provide for our membership.
Did we ever have a situation where somebody didn't pick up their license again or anything like that, and we had to contact?
No.
Okay, so it's not a matter of keeping something?
No. And we felt, one thing came up in our JAC meeting, was do we give in the flags for the Europe, they come in, they check it, they take it. What's going to happen with that is, if I have in the back of my truck, I can give it to somebody else and there's not control. This way, if they check in, if they choose to use it, it's not, if you're over 80, you need to use this. This is just, if you have a disability, getting around, you struggle on days, certain golf courses, that's where this is going to benefit them, that component for the day. Check in, get the card, return it, so we keep control at each location.
And we have enough flags down to cover it, in your opinion?
Yes. Actually, we got ahead of the game in that last year. We thought that the handicap policy was going to be used by a lot of, a lot of people, and it really didn't. We only had 15, so we bought in early, so we feel that this would be a good, good hope for the people to play golf over the age of 80, for sure.
Any concerns?
So, at the golf JAC meeting, I asked the question of, and that, the question still remains. In the fourth line of the policy, it says, "This is a summer program that will run, a test summer program that will run from April 1st through October 31st." And David kindly pointed out that that was the time period. But it does say that that's a time period for the test program. The start, or the delay of the start from today to April 1st, it was my understanding that that was being done because winter conditions would show more wear and tear on the fairways.
Correct. What we have on our golf courses is Bermuda grass. It doesn't grow right now, and if you actually get out there with the rain we have, it's pretty thin out there. So, Keith and I visited, we felt that this would be, I wrote the program stuff in May, that Bermuda sauce popping in, this won't damage the product we have out there for our customers.
Okay, so my question is, I can understand that delay, but does that mean that if it's successful, that going forward, it would only allow the new policy to be in place during the months of April through October? Going forward, not like if it, let's say it's successful, and everybody likes it, then next year, are we going to end it in October and not start it up again until April? And keep that winter period reserved for only people with handicap?
What we'll do, that's a good question, we'll look at the usage of it. You know, we don't know where this is going to go, whether we have 100 people sign up or we have 30 people sign up. We have 30 people sign up, and we have a good winter, good growing season. When we roll through November, Keith and I will visit, look at it and say, okay, we have 30 people sign up? Is this going to hurt our product?
Okay.
It's not going to hurt our product, we may stretch it. If we have 120 people and we have a bad summer or something goes on, we've got to look at that. You know, if we give up the product that Keith worked so hard to give to our membership and our customers, I don't want to give that up as well. But we'll, it will, this is our test.
Right, right, okay.
We'll definitely visit at the end of summer and see what we are.
Okay, thank you very much, that's a good clarification.
Pat, are you aware of there are two golf seasons according to groups, et cetera? That the winter group is now in effect, they start in October and they end in April with the 1st of, the end of March?
Yes.
And then the summer group starts at the end. So it kind of coincides with the groups as well, as of course, conditions?
Well, but still, if, Mike, the concern that was expressed is that since it would be pre-growing season, there may be more damage if it's widely used during the winter. And so I just, Darrell's clarification, that they'll reexamine the situation at the end and determine the extent of the, of the time period in which it'll be effective, is a good one.
Any other questions or concerns? We don't vote on this, it's policy. Or do you vote?
No, we don't have to vote.
But we just kind of want a consensus to make sure that everybody's in agreement. Everybody in agreement? Okay.
I want to thank the board for listening to us, and the member that came forward, Mr. Bill King, brought it to us, showed that we listened, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
We appreciate the JAC for taking it on. Thanks, Darrell.
Next up on the agenda, we, I was approached by a property owner that wanted us to expand the statistical reporting that we provide on the DOA's website. And so what we plan on doing is, at next month's meeting, presenting some draft, new statistical reports for the board to consider, and determine if we want to implement them. So I just want to, want the board to be aware that we're trying to accommodate this request. It appears to be a reasonable request, and we'll go forward from there.
Questions or comments?
Tom, I've got one question on that. So we provide the information to the public, and they have the right to access to that. What about their representation of that information, whether they break it out in their own graphical look and see that? And we provide just raw data, oftentimes just a spreadsheet. So, I don't know if there's anything that we have in place or that we're thinking about. So if I was to take that information, I was a member, and I was to make it into a different bar graph, or a different pie chart, or a different type of graphical presentation of that information, and that is disseminated throughout. I think, I think what we're seeing on the request for this is because people want to make a better judgment on the financial being of the POA. And so, what I've witnessed out there in the public is that they're taking these numbers, and they're trying to make their own analysis by doing, they're presenting them in new ways. So, we may have some sort of, I don't know if we can have check and balance on this, we obviously can't control, or we can maybe, a tooth to ask to verify if somebody wants to represent these numbers in a new graphical way, or we may pursue different ways that we can provide options to look at those same numbers, past the raw spreadsheet, so we can somewhat meet them in the middle on that. Because that's where I think a lot of people struggle, because not everybody learns, and to view the statistics that way. That's why they came up with the pie chart, that's why they came up with the bar graph. So, and it's only getting more aggressive with the onset of infographics. So we should think about how to make sure that we deliver that information, so it's clear to many types of learners, and how it's presented.
I think that's a real good point. You can't, you can't control how someone's going to interpret the information, but also I don't think that hiding the information is, is the answer.
If I could offer that, if, if there is a situation, for instance, John Nudle brought up a disparity in a number that was, seemed to be growing artificially or without explanation. And I would suggest that what we do is, when we, when we have these situations, if we're going to release the data, if there are situations where that occurs, that we asterisk the data, and have a, have a reference to a footnote that says, the disparity caused between this and this is, is due to a very simple explanation, not a large amount of detail. But in the case of John's stuff, Tommy, you responded and gave him a good explanation of what had happened. I can just see that happening with other people. You know, that there is a perfectly understandable explanation for the data variations, and yet, at the same time, without being privy to the reason for that, that people may draw false conclusions. And so it would be a good idea, if there are instances like that, where they are informed of the reason.
I think if you look at how the Rounds report has, has evolved in a short amount of time, where the board had asked us to ask management to put together a Rounds report, and then within a month or two, and they, the board came back and said, why don't you add some clarifying context?
Yes.
To it, which called out, you know, look at this number is up, or this number is down, and this is why. So I think that's kind of what you're talking about.
Yes.
And so, I think what we do is, let's develop the draft version of just the numbers themselves, and then maybe, maybe the second iteration is where we take it to the next level and revise.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Some explanation.
Yeah.
But I don't want to start doing the whole, you know, let's get, let's get step one completed, and then we'll work on step two, almost like what we did with the golf report.
Right, and you could just publish the raw numbers, and if, if issues are raised, how much attention any individual member is paying to those numbers will be cause for giving fuller explanation, you know, but let's not just jump into it where we try to answer all the questions to begin with. I think that's a great point.
And we have analytics on our website where we can see where, where what is more popular and less popular.
Right.
You know, I remember last year, we pulled up that only 50 people had clicked on our budget. I thought that was a fairly low number. But, you know, clearly, are we going to invest a huge amount of time on something that's receiving very limited attendance? And I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Doug's going to talk about three modifications to our, two, three different policies, actually, two modifications and one big policy.
Pat approached me several months ago about a concern that he had with our board member director removal procedure, and really, there was, it was lacking. So he and I have worked for several months to kind of put something together that we could present to the Rules and Regulations Committee. And that, really, we didn't really have a very good process for, for removal of a director if there was an issue. And also, there was really nothing in there that talked about discipline of a director if that was warranted. So, we, we put together a change, Policy 1.10. Previously had, you know, the outline of how that removal process was to take place. So, I felt like it deserved its own policy, so I removed part of 1.10 and added something, another statement there. Took part of 1.10 and created a new policy, 1.12, which is now called a disciplinary procedure for directors. So it's not just removal, but it also covers disciplinary procedures, including removal. So if you read 1.10 and 1.12 in concert with each other, those, those policies now will reflect what we feel like is a good, a good procedure now, step-by-step procedure for a disciplinary process for directors if that should happen. And we, we presented that to the Rules and Regulations Committee. Jim, if you want to give an update, we had a couple of meetings on that, had some changes, went back and forth and had changes, and I believe it was the recommendation of the Rules and Regulations to bring it forward to the, to the full board.
Yeah, we sure did. We had, we saw.
Not yet. We, we had two Rules and Regulation Committee meetings recently, and we're proposing this, really, we did have four of the board members in attendance, three on the committee, and one also attended. And we, what we're asking board, full board, to do now is look at this draft and help finalize, so that we can, we can begin the process of the readings very quickly, whether that happens at next week's meeting or not. But I'd invite each of the board members to look at the draft that Rules and Regulations Committee has adopted.
And also, we, we looked at Policy 6.02 regarding disclosure of information, and so we made a slight modification of that as well. And that was part of, part of, the revision to Policy 1.10 and the creation of Policy 1.12 as well. And again, that went through the same process with the Rules and Regulations Committee. They've already unanimously to present these to the full board, and so that's what we're doing today.
Regarding the disciplinary actions, as I've read it a couple of times, it's more of an outline as to various steps in detail, rather than generalities. So it hasn't changed from what we've done in the past, it's just kind of modified it and made it step-by-step.
Correct. The policy still remains that it's up to the board, the full board, to vote on any disciplinary, any disciplinary action that would be handed down. So it's still, that power remains with the board. Like you said, it outlines a little bit further steps, and I feel like provides the board further options, you know, not just removal, but here's several suggestions that the board could take for a discipline.
Where previously, you really only covered removal.
Correct.
We didn't talk about any options.
Yeah, I'll tune just for a second on this, as being part of the Rules and Regulations meetings, I felt like there was a considerable amount of effort that went into this, and I was happy to see so much thought, because it wasn't, to me, just discipline, it was also growth mechanisms for people, and chances to come to clearer understandings. It wasn't just disciplinarity in this, and that outline that Doug and Pat has worked on, to me, showed a high level of, of caring about the board members as well, and their growth in the role. And sometimes, through the course of so much that's happening in the POA and the community, many, many times, it's an opinion or an effort of an individual board member that may need call to attention. It doesn't always result in needing disciplinary action as much as it needs further clarification in, in times then. So I was, I was happy to see that those efforts went in that direction.
Your comments?
If you, if, those of you who have not been on the Rules and Regulations Committee meeting, will find that there's a form at the end of the thing that's titled misconduct allegation form. And that, that is to keep any charge in written form, that it's got to be submitted. It's not just a griping thing, you know, where you come before the board and you say, you know, Jerry Hofer's been, you know, whatever, you know. So it's, it's, if someone has an, has an allegation to make that there was misconduct, they complete the form, and the form is submitted to the Board of Directors. So it keeps it at a more documented level, you know, we know exactly what the, what the charge is, and we don't, we don't have to get involved in conversations during board meetings for clarifications and things like that, before the charge is actually submitted to the board.
I forgot what you did, Jerry.
My understanding is everything that's on this would still be in executive session?
Yes. Except for the voting, whatever the, whatever the
The outcome.
Outcome of that would be disclosed as, as it passed.
Any other questions or comments?
So, two quick things. So, Jim touched on this, the approval process, assuming the board does not object, this would go forward at next week's meeting. It would potentially be voted upon. If approved at that time, it would then go to next month's meeting, and if it's approved for the second month in a row, then it would become policy. For more property owners that are interested in these changes, proposed changes, they can go onto the DOA's website, if they go, go to the governance section, they will see where, where there's a tab that you can click on, and it says, policies under consideration or considered to be changed. And those working with LEA are already available on the DOA's website. So if you'd like to get more information regarding these changes, you can go forward and then do the research on your own.
One other point, because we're thinking about bringing it up at next week's meeting, it would be who the board to take careful, give careful consideration to this. And unless there are anything other than grammatical changes, to get back to dog in town as soon as possible, so that it, it can't be, if there are significant concerns, and you have, those haven't arisen today, that we know we can't, can't move forward at next week's meeting for a reading, because of those concerns, it would have to be presented back to the board again. Wouldn't that be correct?
Right, yeah.
Any other comments? So if we move to next week's forward, unless somebody has objections at a later time or changes?
Next up, Jerry, can you give us a little update on the criteria rating development that you've been offering on with a number of people?
Okay, first, the update on it, we've had two meetings in the last several months with individuals from the community and the POA concerning establishment of an outdoor archery range. And as it stands right now, we've looked at a number of sites, and narrowed those down to three separate ones, that appear to be some of the best fit. And that would be one out near the current gun range, one off of Nelly Road, and one on the very edge of the Archmont property. We now have, through the meetings, a pretty good idea of what the needs are for both short-term and long-term. And now it's a matter of bringing all the folks together and arriving upon what kind of a design that we'd be looking at, and then moving it forward through the Recreation Committee. Myself, I'm a resource person to the Recreation Committee. The committees themselves are the ones that are taking the lead on this. Is there any questions? It's pretty brief.
Jerry, it's interesting, you said a word, as you were beginning your presentation, that I had never even thought about. You said, outdoor ranges, okay? Is there any possibility, or is there any desire, to try to locate something within the confines of our current recreation buildings that might be used as an archery range for indoor shooting? You know, I don't even know if that's feasible, but I was thinking like, let's say, a, what are the handball courts? You know, some, some, something could be arranged where the handball court could be used for our target practice, or something, let's say, at Reardon Hall. I, I don't know, you know, I'm just offering that as a, asking if there was any thought being given to indoor shooting.
At the present time, there's not any request for any further indoor facilities. They appear to have the, like the Hook, Line &amp; Sinker has a course inside, many of their schools have courses the inside. The problem is, they do not have anything outside.
Okay.
So that's why we're concentrating upon the outside rather than inside.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, are we taking a step-by-step approach on this? And, and what I mean by that is, start small and go big? Or are we looking at enough acreage, as an example, that you could do everything that you wanted by way of an archery range? You know, from, from short range to longer range? I don't know what it all involves.
At the current time, we're actually looking at all, all of the possibilities. You know, if we find a permanent site, then that's a long-term process, but we may start with a simple, short target range, rather than including the field archery courses that would go with that. But part of it also depends upon, you know, if grants can be obtained, then maybe we need to go for all of it. If the group does not come together and formalize everything, you know, probably bounce back to the POA in budgeting for it in another year, two years down, down the line. So, there's a lot of gifts involved in it, yeah. So the next meeting will be scheduled currently for March 16th? And try and put a few more of the dots over the i's and cross in a few more of the t's.
I'll tune in just a second on this, as being involved in a number of different archery discussions across the region, and having invested in the equipment, and spent a fair amount of time out of myself, I, what I think of Bellevista, in many ways, I kind of have almost the Boy Scout manual in front of me, because there are just so many great things you can do here, in terms of outdoor recreation and not, not much, and just growing up in this area, many of our scouting adventures happen in Bellevista. And it kind of is surprising that archery hasn't been a part of the conversation up here, especially since it's one that you can continue to carry on throughout the ages. And I'm excited for Jerry's efforts here, to get something more formalized, to offer as another amenity base here. I think it's actually going to be a well-used thing, something that will see some considerable growth, if we get something done. So hopefully, it'll take two years, and I'm confident we'll find a location this year. But I'm excited to see it coming out. Thank you, Jerry, for working on it.
Any other comments? Any other suggestions, input? Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, so the next one on the agenda is planning for a lot sale event. As you know- know, we have about 600 lots that the DOA owns in our inventory, and a number of those are less than desirable for building, they're either steep or remotely located, so we don't have very good success in selling those lots. So what we're positioning for the last week of March is what we're calling, we haven't named it yet, we're still developing the plans for this, but it's a membership drive, something of that sort, I'm not the marketing person, but as you know, if you own, to be a member of the DOA, you have to own property, so we're hoping that we can push this and market this and sell these lots that are, you know, essentially not buildable for membership, so that people can have access to the amenities, and we're looking at doing a blowout sale of greatly reduced price, but so that we can entice people to be members of the DOA and use our amenities. So that's scheduled for the last week of March, and we're continuing to develop plans for that, so anyone have questions about that, small synopsis?
If you're, if you're going to have this blowout sale, and you mentioned that the lots are very buildable, if you would, are you going to, when you have the sale, are you going to have a rating assigned, so that, let's say, a lot is fully unbuildable, versus a lot that with significant engineering could be buildable, are some which are now readily buildable, so that people, when they're coming forward to look at what stock is available, have some idea without having to travel out to the side of the lot before they...
So, so right now, our lot sales website has a number of lots listed on it, and it has instructions for you to go on the GIS county website, and you can get elevations and see how steep it is, I don't think we want to get into the rating system, we could open ourselves up to, you know, that's a subjective view, so what we will do is put the list out sufficiently ahead of time, that they can, they can go on GIS and look at the lot and assess for themselves.
So you'll give suggest, you'll give a process by which they can get further information, give their necessary references?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Jim has mentioned in the past that if it's a plotted lot, it's a buildable lot, it just depends on how much money you want to spend to make it buildable.
Yeah, okay.
But any of great value probably have been sold?
Yeah, the ones, the ones that, you know, are, are buildable, David does a really good job of getting them sold, and presenting those as...
The effective rating system for the lots, of course, is the price. If the price is, you know, such and such, that it's a readily buildable lot, that's different than a lot that makes, you know, so if you adjust the price, that's the rating system.
Yeah, the two or three or four hundred that we make available through this, they will all have the same price, and it will be a variable price. We don't know exactly what that is yet, we're going to include, you know, it's going to include depreparation, recording costs, all that's going to be included, you know, what my department does, all that cost will be included in the price, and then, you know, so it's just a one flat purchase, purchase price.
One-price shopping.
Make it simple.
And we're developing a process online right now, which is, maybe more information you want to know, but how they can select a lot and pay for it right there online, and we can process their credit card, and that type of thing, so we're moving through that whole system right now.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so last week, the DOA's water department installed a water cap at the Tropographer Fire
site, now many people have come to us and said, well, what does that mean, as the ADQ told DOA how they're going, planning on remediating the situation, and no, we don't, we don't know any more information than what the specifics are regarding what their needs for the water cap, so we decided, you know, so they gave us the specs, we installed it to those spec specifications, we wanted to get it done as quickly as possible, I would much rather have the work finished and wait for the ADQ to actually start using it, as opposed to ADQ being ready to go and waiting on us, so we moved forward very quickly and got that work done, and so it's ready to go, but I have not heard anything regarding what the specific plans are for the use. The next item is, tentatively, there is a community informational meeting set up for February 12th at 6:00 PM at Reardon Hall, this is the group that put together the last meeting in December, I think it was, early December, is the same group that's putting on this meeting, so add that information to your calendar, we'll have that on the DOA's calendar also. With regards to the other, we're kind of calling them the other stump dumps, to differentiate from the Tropographer Fire location, on three of those locations, these are the locations that are all located within the city boundaries of Bellavista, and they've, one was closed over 10 years ago, and the other two were closed over 20 years ago. All those sites have been inspected by FTN, which is the company that the DOA hired to do this work, and they have submitted letters to ADQ on how to go about closing, officially closing those sites in the eyes of ADQ. Those letters were sent off to them last week, and we hope to hear back relatively soon. Regarding the West Side stump dump, FTN is developing plans, and they anticipate they'll have those plans done in about a month on how to officially close the West Side stump dump, officially close in the eyes of ADQ. It's closed right now, you can't go and dump anything there, but in the eyes of ADQ, we're trying to get it officially closed. That one's going to be a little bit more intense on how to close it, but we're waiting for those results back from FTN, they will then have to go to ADQ for approval before we move forward with any actions. I encourage everybody to continue to consult with the city's website, that's what we're doing, is we're directing everybody to that site. We received yesterday, actually, I'm sorry, the day before, we received the official results, where we had hired a third-party company to analyze the water quality, to see if there was any issues with Lake Brittany and Lake Anne, we did this in December, we had the city post that information to their website, we just got the second round of results, those results are good also, and those were posted to the city's website, yes, they're actually sent off to Kassie, and she accommodated my request, and posting it instead of the website, so I encourage everybody to utilize the city's websites for your source of information.
Tom, would you address the reports we've had that the West Side's stump dump is has fires, or is burning, or, I know it's been looked into?
So I received an email from a property owner last week, they were very concerned that the West Side stump dump may be on fire, we sent out an employee within 30 minutes to look at it, and it was not the case. In speaking with the engineers from FTN, it is steam from the decomposition of the organic material that is there.
Any other questions? If not, we come to, once again, to the open forum, where property owners have their right to speak for three minutes, we entertain anybody. Nobody cares to speak to us?
I do have a comment.
John, go ahead, speak to us.
Thank you for your work on the policy changes, when I saw that on the agenda a few days ago, I quickly went to look and check about, you know, what the rules and regulations should make us do, and interestingly, I discovered they have not met for 18 months, according to the website.
Have we moved some rates?
Nope. March of 17th was the last time events were posted. We will get that, thanks. And Leah's, your change after the shutout, yeah? And I've been a lot of bitch on open meetings, I understand the rules and regulations, particularly in private, as I did this week, but I find it hard to believe that anything that happens at that meeting grows to the level that it should have been at in private meetings. Thank you.
I don't know that, Jim, it was not, it was not announced as a private, as a closed meeting, was it?
It wasn't announced as anything.
Well, isn't it, it's best to assume that it's an open meeting unless it's identified as a closed meeting?
The door's certainly closed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the door.
Anyone else? First, Brad.
I had put something past Tom the other day, relative to trying to ease the congestion right here between golfers and the users of the restaurant, and I appreciate Tom's reply to me, I was wondering if anybody else has any thoughts about making more space available, so that we are not crowding each other out. I haven't heard of any complaints yet from, you know, restaurant goers coming in and saying, hey, golfers are taking our spaces.
We're trying to park the spaces.
Parking, parking, space, space.
If we know of an event in advance, we'll, now, the employees are required to park on the third level, on the upper level, with that being said, if there is a large event that we know is coming, what we'll do is we will have the employees park at Tanion Creek, and then we actually shuttle, shuttle them over. With that being said, there's an occasional instance, we had one last week or the week before, where it was a seminar on scams, and that received an overwhelming response from the community, and we were surprised by it, and the host was also surprised, and that maxed out the parking lot, and we had a couple complaints, so when we, when we can anticipate it, we try and make sure that we move the employee cars, because that reduces the number of spots, or increases the number of stop, spots available. The challenge we have is that we're landlocked, so we really can't add another level of parking, but there's definitely times that we could use, especially on large shotgun events, we have like a double shotgun and so forth.
Over the summer, we have used, if it's a long tournament or double shotgun, they have locked off the restaurant areas until it's time for the restaurant to open, and so there's definitely spaces for restaurant people on those days, so people don't fill both sites, and that's usually out-of-town people who weren't aware that the restaurant is locked off, or blocked off until overnight. Mike, go ahead.
Well, I was thinking of, you know, just customer service, and is there, and maybe in the future, this summer, when we anticipate great weather, and the restaurant really humming, and the golf courses really doing lots of business, instituting some sort of valet service, just hearing Daryl's commentary about handicap needs, I see the same opportunity there to offer extended level service.
Let me follow up and look at Mike on that, that's kind of what I was thinking, and we could probably use a lot of my time, because at the very full, and on those heavy days, we're anticipating a big tournament, and you're still going to have the employees park over there and shuttle, shuttle over, just like you can't, employees, send a big car over there, bring their bags, I'd be happy to do that, sometimes it's a lot easier to walk out of the stairs, than pick me up and run, 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 park. So maybe if you advertise it that way, and maybe valet park, somebody, maybe pay 10 bucks for valet park your car, I don't know what we want to charge for, we can figure out a way to make a buck quite a lot.
Let's remember, Tom, when he opened the restaurant a year ago, almost, I think it was April, he said the striping that was done to follow up is a test, so the striping may be adjusted here as the year progresses, there may be less for restaurant, or more for restaurant, or vice versa.
So far, it seems to be working, but there are days that we run out, no denying that, but they're good, but as long as we have enough advanced warning, we can easily make investments.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just, I worry when a warmer spring and hot summer is upon us, relative to what's going on here, the golfers, the people who want to partake of BD, bar, etc., could become problematic, and as David suggested, and we all know, there's a huge lot down at Tanion Creek, but I defer to you on the expense of actually running a cart shack type operation out of, out of Tanion Creek, to accommodate golfers that want to park down there.
The expense and the, and the control, because how do you check them in and so forth, the good news is we're talking about a good problem, too many people want to come here, it's a good problem to have.
I'll let the IR do it. Well, I blame you for being a board member.
Any other questions?
So I was thinking about the report that has been requested, and I think it's a great idea, I mean, one thing that I liked about the golf report is the analysis, because if nothing else, it lets us know that you know what the members really say, and I think there will be much more interest and scrutiny on the, on the DOA budget in the coming years, because when you have $12 million or whatever it is in reserves, nobody can, but as our reserves have fallen, there are more and more people who have an interest, and I think an executive summary-type report of what the monthly status is would be of great interest to a lot of members. The other thing is on the policy, which I like, but it would be helpful if on the agenda, maybe you could put a link to how you could get to the information, because, I mean, I go with the financials quite frequently, and I still have to think about how it is that you get there, and if you're not familiar, you never find it, so just in the interest of transparency of that.
I think that's a good point, if you're only going to the website a handful of times, and you're looking for this, you can do it, we can. The good news is that our website has a tremendous amount of information, the bad news is, we have a tremendous amount of information, and trying to find what you're looking for can be a challenge.
Any other, go ahead, Jerry.
I think Susan, to talk just briefly on the Longest Day.
Oh, okay. So, I think most of you know that last year, the Golf Committee approved a Longest Day tournament, and we held that tournament, and we raised about $10,000, and that was the single largest event that the Longest Day had in Arkansas, and kind of as a result of getting involved in that, and now the Longest Day Committee, and so what we're going to try to do this year is expand the breadth of the events that we have in Bellavista. We have a lot of people in Bellavista that are impacted by Alzheimer's, either themselves or their family members, serious disease, it's growing, and it's going to get worse in the short term, so we're just at the beginning of the planning stages, and so I just sort of, this sort of awareness, that we're looking for people who might be interested in hosting events, and they don't need to be huge events, these can be, you know, just a club day, that you're doing something to raise money for Alzheimer's, or a bike ride, or a kayak, or a paddle day, or a day at the beach, or whatever, some, and we have lots of ideas, but we need, we'll be soliciting for people to organize and promote the events, or volunteer at them, because we want to get our donations up from $10,000 up to the $25,000 range for Bellavista this year.
What date is it, Susan?
The golf tournament this year is the 17th of August, the Longest Day is all centered around the Salsa, which I think is... for February, where we will be, is February 28th at 6:30. Be standing, Jerry.